Okay, we'll go ahead and bring the city councilman in order. I'd like to first ask everyone to stand and join our side in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Kevin, can we please do roll call?
Jay Bowershaw.
Here.
Matt Dyer.
Here.
Tyler Formkamp.
Here.
Scott Murray.
Here.
Okay, was anyone given a chance to review the minutes at our last meeting on November 19th?
Somebody else, I wouldn't hear.
Any corrections, deletions, additions?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Motion's second, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose same sign. Okay, you're a good vote already, Scott's got, okay. All right. Emma, we have one visitor. I want to let her know who you are, I know you've been here a couple times.
Yeah. Hi, I'm Emma and I'm a senior fellow.
Okay.
About third year?
Yep.
Yeah.
Glad to have you.
Thanks for coming.
You're welcome.
Okay, um, we have additional appropriation for the Merritt Center for the HVAC system. I think this is something that we ordered over a year ago and moved it.
Yeah, I think the end of '23 run up towards the end of the year, that chillers could also be done at the Merritt Center for about $149,000. At the time, the budget was already done, so additional appropriation was thought about at the time as the way to pay for it, and so that's, we just received the bill last week, so that's where we're at. We had to do an additional appropriation earlier in the year to get the $200,000 that the county paid us for that property that they're building on.
And that was part of the plan with the county paying?
That was part of the plan, that was additional appropriation, but it was a wash.
So I think as of now, we have all the heating and air conditioning, everything working out there in that building?
Yep, it'll all be completed here.
Yeah, BTS, right? They've done all the work?
Yeah, BTS.
Okay, oh, that's right, Dylan Group, yes.
There've been a few little good balls here there that are working through some maintenance, or maintenance items.
Right, they changed all the valves and all the water lines and everything for the...
More maintenance items to build, and just absolutely making sure that it's good.
Okay. So what do we need, approval of the...
Introduce.
Resolution for, entertain a motion to introduce resolution for the additional appropriation to cover expenses for finishing HVAC at Merritt Center?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's second, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Jay, I will add that, that company's got a wonderful product. It's an American one, with, it comes to an excellent, anytime that there was a problem there, I need, and all of it.
Yeah, right, cool.
Very, very, very responsible.
Good, that's great.
Resolution number 2024-10, additional appropriation.
That's a short title.
It is the short title.
Do we make a motion?
Second.
Motion's second, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose same sign, okay. Okay, we have, also have a resolution amending the employee handbook?
Yeah, so this was, I brought this up at the last meeting, the only changes that were made were the vacation, vacation schedule changes and increase of the per diem. The per diem increase was $20 a day, $60 overnight, and yeah, the vacation benefits is, you start to improve vacation sooner than you have before.
So...
I'll make a motion to introduce resolution 2024-11, my short title only, second.
Motion's second, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Resolution 2024-11, resolution of the common council of the city of Decatur, Indiana, which amends the city of Decatur employee handbook dated January 1, 2018. I make a motion to pass resolution 2024-11, second.
Motion's second, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose same sign. Okay.
I guess matter of record of additional appropriation.
Okay, uh, we need to make a, or we need to prove that the, uh, additional appropriation was made a matter of record, yeah, the publishing of it?
Yeah, those taxpayers, those appropriately published.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's second, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose same sign. Okay.
Here's Max.
Okay. Um, well, let's go ahead, I got TV going up there. Kurt, will you come up, talk about 417 Line Street? I guess, let's walk through Plan Commission today.
Brett Miller from Miller Land Survey came in front of Plan Commission today on behalf of Daniel and Kelly Walker for rezoning of 417 Line Street. I have up here, on my corner line, Lopez, right now it's one big lot. They request to have it re-zoned from an I-2 to an R-1, which the R-1, the residential matches properties to the south and to the southwest, also to the southeast. Normally, reason most of these are I-2 is because of under railroad tracks. There's plenty of room here for the I-2, the railroad tracks are yet, the property here will remain I-2, so they requested to have this property re-zoned to an R-1, and then they also requested to have it replatted into three lots. Show you. Basically, what they want to do is, there's a house that already exists on the south part of the lot, so they want to break that southern part of that property in half, and then they want to divide the upper half in the middle with a thorough lot line, so that they can put a duplex in.
Good.
So they went through Plan Commission, we just need to get council approval for the repla, for the repla.
Plan Commission was good with it?
Plan Commission was good.
Good. I make motion approve.
Should be noted, the duplex they want to put in will face Lopez, but it will not be against Lopez, so they will have a Line Street address. Because of that, there will be a 20-foot easement granted for the driveway through here on the southern part of the lot, and one of the situations is that they will need to put an address sign out at Line Street for first responders. Building code says you have to have an order on the front of the house or the building, so we're requesting that they put that sign up on the street.
So that, they're divided east and west, the building is?
Mm-hmm.
Will they have addresses on the front of the door, or will they have an address at the front, if they've got doors down?
They'll have, they'll have addresses on the front of the building, but...
Out there too?
They'll have them out of the street as well.
Okay.
What is the, what is it zoned as now? You said I-2?
Which means what? Industrial.
Over the last many years, that whole Lopez Lane, Line Street area had been burned into residential, so it's kind of an extension of what has already built out there.
Right, the two lots to the east are already residential with duplexes on.
Just not necessarily rezoned that way, I mean, it's just a, it's a special, it's a special area.
They had special exceptions to build those, but they had requested. I don't know if there's a tax difference from a commercial property to residential, I don't know how it works, I don't know, something, but if you've got a building on a commercial property, I don't know if there's a tax difference there or not.
Sure.
I'm excited they're adding more housing options.
I'll second Max's motion.
Motion's second, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose same sign, okay. Thank you. I thought I smelled pizza, come on up.
I got this invitation from Main Street, I guess this is supposed to be a letter that's going into our newsletter for everybody, but I guess our newsletter wasn't going to be out in time, which, because it talks about the facade meetings this weekend, I mean, Thursday night, and also a meeting we're having next week, an input, or a community meeting, Main Street is doing. I can see it from now on.
So you have two facade meetings Thursday?
Thanks for the invite, I haven't seen that on Facebook, but I'm much better. The community input meeting, that's all it says.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, there's two facade meetings for the money you guys go grant, which is great for the, and they're this Thursday at the Hyde, one at nine in the morning, one at five in the afternoon, so many people, it's one of the requirements to get the facade grant. And then next week, Main Street is sponsoring a community input meeting, basically, we put together a survey that we sent out for all businesses downtown, and this thing, because it wasn't good in the newsletter, I passed it out to everybody in the downtown area today, so that makes sure everybody could have a chance for the grant, and also, they'll be there next week, hopefully, for the input meeting. Basically, I see Dan, so he's his own name on there, he kind of agreed that, hopefully still.
I just saw, I just read that, that I'll be talking, no? Good.
We're having the liaison from Indiana Main Street come in, and she's going to give a call. Basically, our goal for Main Street is...
This is, this is next Thursday, right?
This is next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday, okay, gotcha, okay.
Okay, the, um, no, I lost my case.
It's the liaison, you were talking about the liaison that's coming in to talk.
Okay, the liaison's from the state, she's coming in to talk about Main Street, I guess on the 31st of this year, before that, we have to get our application in, so Main Street can become a certified, I mean, accredited Indiana Main Street. But we're working on getting that, that's part of what this meeting is, is to put together plans and get together and get some community input, you know, what they like to see with events and different things, what's happening downtown, not Main Street, we're being charged up. And that's, and we put that survey already out there, we're trying to go over what, these responses, we've had like 50 or so responses, I know I gave Dan a copy of it and everything on it, and it was all very, I don't even, I can't read, very positive, there wasn't much negativity in it at all, so it's just positive. And, but basically, I was inviting you guys to come next week for that, if you're interested, hopefully, and, um...
Yeah, Renee is the new Ocre liaison to Northeast Indiana, so she was at our mayor's roundtable last week, and she, I'm going to meet with her about an hour before that meeting, so.
Yeah, and like I said, it's to get some ideas from everybody, but we put in the application to become, and it'll take a year, if they approve us, we'll be a aspiring Main Street for a year, then we got to prove ourselves. They do have a lot of paperwork, and that's what they like, it's the, I mean, even today, when I was passing them out, I was doing the inventory on who owns the buildings and stuff, I was asking, you know, if they were the actual owner, if it wasn't the actual, I can go on the tax thing, if I stopped, since I was there, it was easier to ask them who owns the building. Because we're supposed to have that in our application, and I don't know if they actually go through and read all this stuff, or they just see that we do our, we do our homework and that, or actually, and part of that is because once we come in Indiana Main Street, the goal is, I mean, they offer, Ocre offers some grants just for Main Street, a different thing, and they don't just want to probably give a million dollars to a bunch of, I don't know, amateurs, but I guess they wonder what we're doing. So, thanks for that, do you have any questions?
No, thank you for organizing this, I think it'll be great.
Hopefully, hopefully people come, I know there's been, on Facebook, people say your thing, people been talking about, like, coming to us, so we'll push it out there again, for some of the general public too, but hopefully, these downtown businesses who this affects on, affects on events and different things will come. And two, hopefully, I thought, you know, in the past, we were a little criticized that people didn't know about the facade grant. I know it's extended to the city, I didn't personally go out to everybody, but I pretty much hit everybody from Third Street to First Street, and I was going to get a few more across the river tomorrow, and some of the others, just make sure everybody knows about it.
Well, Max, over Thanksgiving holiday, I had a lady in the jewelry store, she hadn't been to Decatur in five years, even though she's from here, she very much enjoyed monster pizza and lots of what she saw going on downtown. She is very impressed with what she saw five years later, just with COVID and everything, hadn't been around for a while, so.
Well, I can agree, man, with you, from 10 years ago, downtown looks so different, and it's been a lot, and it's exciting, and, you know, Main Street's goal is make downtown a part of the city, that, you know, this is where it's happening, not necessarily putting out everybody else, you know, but you have a healthy heart, you have a healthy city, is what Main Street's goal is, so, yeah.
So keep it up.
Yep, thanks for all the work you've been putting into it.
All right, okay, all right, thank you.
Thanks, Max.
Thank you, you're home.
Thanks, Max.
Okay, um, let's go ahead and discuss the ARPA funds and talk about rainy day a little bit. I think you got everything figured out now, right?
So we got our 1782, but notice back, the DLGF, a couple weeks ago, I mentioned it at the last meeting, all the budgets were approved other than the police pension budget. That was reduced by $18,754, excuse me, $18,385. That would, that's due to the fact, I overshot the revenues and the estimates that the DLGF gave me were higher than, than expected, and already that account was already, just to stay in the black, I hadn't, the way I had it was, so there's a couple options to do, to deal with that $18,000 shortfall, we have to fund that budget, we can't just not pay the pensions, so we can do a transfer from the general fund, which is one way, or what I might propose is to use the remaining ARPA funds to cover the last two pension payments of this year, and then that will basically wash out that $18,000 shortfall, because the last two payments is right around $18,000 too, so we're, within $30, the last two payments will cover that, so if we can pay that with ARPA funds or another route, we don't have to do any sort of transfers, if there is a shortfall next year, it'll just be an additional appropriation within the fund, if that makes any sense. But, so that leads to the ARPA fund. So I am a bonehead and didn't account for all the things that were approved last time when I said we had this much money to spend. Back in July, we approved some dump truck equipment for the dump truck that we ordered, part of that to be paid out of ARPA funds, and that was $49,000. I didn't account for that in my total last, last meeting. So with everything that has been approved, we've actually approved $31,000 extra than what we were granted. So, I know I pushed at it for six months to try to get it all spent, and then they never got, so, um...
We're just overachievers.
Yeah, something like that, so I gave you guys all a spreadsheet, this is where we're at right now with the ARPA funds, the left side is everything we've spent money on this year, right side is all the pending amounts, and then you see the balance down there, maybe of $31,000. I broke out, there's a couple projects that are pending, one of them is the wastewater treatment, building upgrades, that I highlighted down in the right-hand corner. So it's where we're at now, that's the current picture, if you flip to the back page, it's the same spreadsheet, with some numbers moved around. This takes into account on the right-hand side, the pending column, the police pension amount that would be needed to cover the two final payrolls for that, but it removes the $49,000 from the ARPA funds for the dump truck equipment upgrade. If we were to do that, and then also, the wastewater treatment building upgrades, there's material costs in there that are still coming in, with some of these other purchases, they're already, like the skid loader and that kind of stuff, we already have them, we just haven't paid the invoices yet, some of the stuff is already in the works, this, this project I picked out, like I said, highlighting the corner, so the way I have it figured up there in the right-hand corner, we would end up exactly $0, but the $49,000 that was approved would have to come out of somewhere else or be dropped to make this work. My thought was, is rainy day had some money in it to save the Merritt Center parking lot this year, that's not going to happen, the county hasn't started their building yet either, so there's money available in rainy day that could be used to fund that equipment purchase. So that, that would be my recommendation anywhere to go, it fits up to you guys on how, how it works, there's a million moving pieces here. So essentially, what I would recommend is, if we pay the WA Jones invoice, the truck equipment out of the rainy day, the $49,000, that'll free up enough money in, with the ARPA funds, to pay out the police pension, which will solve the shortfall of next year. And the only thing other than that is, the wastewater would be $1,000 out of our pocket, rather than ARPA funds for that project. I don't know, any of that makes sense, it's a long way around the barn.
You're still a rookie at this.
Yeah.
No, I think, I mean, they haven't started the Merritt Product Inlet project, so the money's available on rainy day, I think that's...
There's money there, we paid for part of that dump truck out of rainy day also, there is a line item for it already, but this should, this should be down to the dollar now.
It's like every year, end of year, there's a little bit of...
Shuffle.
Shuffle in a budget of funds.
So I, that, that form that I have is what, what I would propose, like I said, if some of these projects that were already approved could be dropped also, if that's, or funded somewhere else, if that's the way you want to go, but trying to get it all, solve the shortfall, spend all the dollars for ARPA, and still accommodate for all the appropriations that were already approved, that's what I came up with.
I like your idea of the use of the rainy day funds, I make a motion to make those adjustments, or Kevin's request.
So, could I get probably three motions, if this is the way you want to go, one would be...
It needs to be broken down a little bit, but...
One would be to utilize rainy day funds rather than ARPA funds for the dump truck equipment. The second would be to spend $18,611.26 of ARPA funds on the final two police pension payrolls.
Does it make sense just to cut one of the water projects out? I mean, they're not starting until next year anyways, are they?
It, we ordered, we've already ordered it.
Already cut.
The water projects have been ordered, all the stuff is already in the works, the building was just, there's, it was four or five different invoices, so they're coming in, it's easier to pick apart it. And so that, that would be the second motion, the third motion would be to then use any remaining ARPA funds to pay for the wastewater treatment project. And then, like I said, to finish that, then wastewater would have to pay $1,000.
So the first motion is to use rainy day rather than ARPA funds for the dump truck equipment.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's second, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Yeah, you guys have any questions about any of that, I'll answer for you.
What are some other things that we use rainy day for?
This year, what was approved was half of the dump truck purchase, and then utilities covered the other half, and then paving Two Brothers Parking Lot in Merritt Center was in the budget this year. It, rainy day can be used for basically anything, so every year's different, it's usually a project or a pickup purchase.
Do you remember what project it's for, for tomorrow, for, for next year?
For next year, there was $50,000 for capital projects, it was a place for...
Many times, it's like finishing up a project, or finishing up a project, historically.
And this, I would like to, I don't know if it'll happen by the next meeting, but if it doesn't happen this year, next year, definitely make a rainy day deposit to pad that account some more.
So we pass the first.
So then, I'll make a motion to use ARPA funds to pay a police pension. Oh, fuck it up, do I need to be more specific on that?
You can say $18,611.26.
There you go.
Okay, motion's second, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose same sign.
And then the third motion would be to change the RA sewage amount, and just use all remaining ARPA funds to go towards the wastewater treatment building.
And then a thousand comes out of their budget?
Yeah, and that, it's, yeah, $999 and some change.
They also just got to...
Let's get another, there's many.
Yeah, but would not have happened without ARPA fund, but only $1,000 is a bad joke. Okay, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion's second, to use remaining ARPA funds to pay for the sewer project on the building. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose same sign. And again, I don't know if anybody hasn't seen that building out there, but what Josh and Kerry's crew have done out there, it's made use of a building that just wasn't getting used, and it's, it's a nice place now, so. Okay. Um, last thing I have on my agenda is a discussion over DORA, just brought up at the department head this morning, that if we're indeed thinking about a DORA, designated outdoor refreshment area for next summer, we need to start discussions now, because there will be a lot of planning, a lot of meetings to make it happen, so.
I guess, fellas, in what happened at the department head meeting and discussion?
So, I'm, DORA has been brought up, it's been available for communities since last year, and it's picked up steam, and a lot of communities have endorsed it and gone through the process, so it's, it's becoming more, more regular, you're seeing more of them in communities, but essentially, it's an opportunity for a community to create a designated perimeter within which you can carry an alcoholic beverage that's purchased from designated vendors within, within the area, and participating stores and locations within, within the DORA. And participating stores and locations within, um, within the DORA mapped area will allow you to kind of come and go with, with your beverage, so.
In a designated container, too.
In a, yeah, in a designated container, and businesses have the opportunity to opt in, opt out, as to whether or not they would like to participate. But it is, it is somewhat controversial. It, it's a, you know, it's, in some cases viewed as promoting, promoting drinking, promoting, um, there's have been concerns about people, you know, excessively drinking because of it. That hasn't necessarily, you know, been shown to play out that way. But with our outdoor concerts during the summer on Madison Street, with the number of activities we have in our downtown area, the number of events that have different street closures, and it seems on a weekly basis during the summer, that we have, we have a lot going on. And so this is a way to, you know, further enhance or encourage people to come down, downtown and enjoy those festivities. So it's also an opportunity for, for us to make sure that people are, are being responsible, that they are staying within that designated area, that we, that we do know where those, where beverages are, are coming from, where they're being sold from. And so, um, the process, but there is a process to go, go through in order to establish DORA. You certainly need to have kind of an anchor vendor, or an idea of who, who your designated vendors are going to be, that involves a lot of discussions with, with area businesses and, um, potential licensees. So the different, different bars and restaurants.
And it would also allow you guys to set up the rules and restrictions. I mean, it doesn't have to be for the fourth level, and it can be for certain events, it can be for certain days of the week. It, we're allowed to set up however we want. Fort Wayne has three of them. They set up three different Doras with different restrictions. So, I think Anne's just asking right now for the approval, for her to start looking into it, to diving into other Doras around the state, to see what kind of language makes sense.
Yeah, as soon as the ability was out there, some, one of the key people at the American Legion approached me, what are your thoughts on it? Well, let's hear the pros and the cons. I think we've taken it kind of a slower approach. Let's see what some of the other municipalities are doing first, and then...
One of the issues that helps with the Legion is, you know, as of now, we have a vendor that has a, for a, a license for, or permit for that designated area, and then if someone walks from one place to the other, they're actually breaking the law. And it becomes quite a controversy during concerts. This way, it would open up to an area. So if someone wanted to walk to Benny's or to somewhere else, Two Brothers, they could do that.
And I think our community has proven itself with Madison Street Plaza being in operation how many years now? We'd had very few problems, and we've had police presence there if there was a problem. It really didn't stem from the concerts at the plaza. It was people that maybe came to the plaza already that were an issue. So I think by all means, people have conducted themselves well. I would certainly entertain Anne exploring further to see.
I mean, at, at this point, um, I think that there's, there's a lot of information available in terms of drafting kind of the restrictions and the guidelines that go, go with it. As much as anything, it is communicating with local businesses and local, kind of our downtown area, and really deciding who wants to be a part of, of the DORA area and what that perimeter looks like. Because that is actually part of the application itself, is creating the map and defining the specific area. So those would be early conversations to begin.
If, if, you know, if you walk around a lot of the, the Michigan west coast beach towns, it's a part of the shopping scene. I mean, there's Doras in all the downtowns, and they're, they're labeled where, where is okay and where's not.
Yeah. I would be okay with starting the exploration and having conversations with the businesses and with Kevin. And I like the idea of being able to put our own parameters on it, what that means and looks like for us.
I think we've had such success with some of the events on the plaza that I see, I see it myself. People say, oh, it's busy, I think I'll duck into Soul Pig, or I'll duck into Monster Pizza or Two Brothers, and just the ability to help them do business, you know? I, I see a lot of people eating somewhere and then going to a concert, you know? I see it often.
That's great.
Yeah, it's great for those businesses. I've done it myself. We're at an event, and it was hot that day, so we ducked into Soul Pig.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And then maybe would leave Soul Pig, come back to the event, you know?
Then the application has to go to the state, is that what it is? Or you said application, or just...
Yes. So, formal application, you have to identify who the, the vendors are within, who the designated vendors are, what the perimeter is, provide a, a map, your approved ordinance, the different guidelines that are affiliated with, with DORA.
Can like, can a vendor be approved that was just coming in from the outside to do an event? You know, some of the vendors have to get a special license to work on the plaza. Do they get...
Um, I'll have to see if...
How that works.
If a caterer's license would be sufficient to be able to be included, or...
That that person isn't buying special insurance every time they come to do an event?
I mean, yeah, I would need to verify that, or see how that, that factors in.
That's part of the idea, yeah. And I know, so they're already planning on making some changes to it this year, the legislature is, because what it doesn't allow is someone to bring in something into the area, because that's like taking it to another bar. And what has happened in a city somewhere in the state was people lived in the downtown, and they weren't allowed to bring beer into their house, because they brought it somewhere else and brought it into the DORA. I'm just saying, that's one of the things that legislature went, yes, we need to fix that. So I think there's some clarification that's gonna happen this, this session.
Okay.
Yeah. Any new law has some changes, right Barb?
Okay, so we're gonna...
I think you guys both said you approved, do we need a motion to...
Really, this is just a discussion, yeah, just the, um, opportunity to move forward with...
And there will be public meetings later when, when we get to that point. Okay. You have anything else for your agenda? You in? Um, I just have one thing real quick. Last Wednesday night, we invited some young adults to the bowling alley for just a little get-together on, on the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. First, I want to thank Jamie and, Jamie for helping, she's not here now, but Abby for helping organize it with Jamie and myself, Matt for coming, and Chief Gerber for showing up. We had a little over thirty kids there, kids, I call them, I guess, but they're eighteen to twenty-four-year-olds. But the whole point behind this was to get some input from this, this age group. My vision is to keep these people here, right? When I came back five years ago, that was one thing I heard, was what are you gonna do to keep the youth living here? That is the best way to grow your community, is keeping your homegrown people. And I think that's been a problem. I don't think their input's been asked for, for years and years and years. So that's why I started the Mayor's Youth Council, and that's why we moved on to this. This is just the beginning of reaching out to this group. I want to do more of this a few times a year. So again, thank you, Matt, Chief Gerber, and Abby, thank you for helping. It, it went pretty well. I was hoping to get twenty to thirty, and we had, I think, just over thirty, so...
I think it was very successful. It was very exciting to see who showed up, and they all participated in the survey. I think it's a great idea. I mean, what better way to be sustainable, right, than to encourage your youth to have a voice and give some input?
You know, I think I, one of the things that really caught me was one of the kids who was in line for food said, I'm just glad to hear that you guys care.
Yeah.
That, that really meant a lot.
Yeah.
You know, so that, the point's getting across.
And an idea came up about the frisbee thing, right?
Oh, yeah, disc golf. We're, we're working with some local disc golf players, and there's two of the kids there that said they're, since they went to school, they've really gotten into it, and they want to get involved and help design the course, so.
Yeah.
That's great. Yeah, you're right. Okay, um, anything from department heads?
Uh, we have a question, we'll end this Friday. So, pretty well caught up now, because some leagues are, are wrecked out in the weekend, but guys have done real well, staying on top of it. Pretty well caught up. We'll keep the machine out till Friday, till the last minute, because it's cold as it's gonna be in the next couple of days. I don't want too many more to come out, so. I sent an email out last, would have been about November the seventh or the eighth, on our meeting process announcement. Uh, the next meeting, the board of works will open those bids for that project. It's gonna be a huge improvement in, into that area. We've branched out a little further in this application, we got in the sidewalks, curb ramps, curbs, and total paving and pavement markings. I want to see how this goes. If it goes as successful as what I believe it will, we have some other areas of money that we can focus on, so. Appreciate the support that you guys have given that program the last six, seven years. It's been very, very successful. You want to touch on last week's?
Oh, yeah, I mean, Jeremy and I have been working on, I mean, we know it's been an issue around the, the school system, three schools out there, for pedestrian safety. So we worked together with USI consultants to apply for an HSIP grant through NDOT. We were awarded, well, the whole total project's four hundred and sixty thousand. We're awarded ninety percent of that, which is four fourteen or something. We, now we have to select an engineering firm to design the whole thing, and it'll be, this is still gonna take at least a year before we get to this, but it's about the, the crossings that on, along Monroe Street and also in Pickway, the pedestrian crossings. There's gonna be some raised crosswalks, some lighting, some, some different markings, but it's all about safety around the school system out there, so. Anything else you want to add to that?
Um, several years back, you guys had USI consultants do a roadway safety audit, just to review after we put the sidewalks in, and does any other person's law here, just to make sure that we didn't miss anything. One of the things that exceeded, we done very well, by the way, getting on it, but one thing that exceeded the standards was a recommendation to put a hog signal up. What a hog signal up is, is, it's like a traffic signal, but it's for pedestrians. It goes up over the road, um, there's push buttons and stuff for that. They're pretty pricey, so it wasn't anything that council or the board of works decided at that point, hey, let's run right out and do this, let's look at some options. You know, we've heard the comments, the complaints, the different rants on different social media about the kids, the kids, the kids crossing out there. We have not forgotten about it. That's the focus of, of this fifty million dollars that NDOT put out is, is quick. It's improvement, safety improvements that you can make within, make a two-year period. And ultimately, we went after it, you know, very aggressively. And last Wednesday, we were awarded that money, so. Construction may not happen on twenty-seven. It's a fiscal, it's, it's a budgeted fiscal of twenty-seven, which the state's fiscal is July one to June thirty. You're probably looking for more of a fall to winter letting or the project out for a bit, uh, twenty-six, twenty-seven, right in there. So I would look for much construction to, in completion till probably schools out on twenty-seven, twenty-six, twenty-seven.
We're hoping, once we select an engineering firm, that they'll say this is gonna be an easy project, and we can move it up. That's, conversation we had in the meeting today was possibly can be moved up, so we'll see. We'll do anything we can to get it done as fast as we can.
There's some payment changes, some ramp change, changes. I don't want to really talk about that too much until we get a design completed and approved, but it's, it'll be very worthy.
Question, clarification on cardboard. With Christmas coming, people have tons of boxes. Do you pick up or...
Get it out or pick up that, sure.
Okay, it doesn't have to be in your can, be next to it.
It can be next to the can.
Is that just for Christmas?
Month of December.
Month of December.
Something that we've done the last probably two years.
Okay.
So get it out, we know there's extra. We'd rather...
If they wanted to drop it off somewhere...
Drop it off at Elm Street. Just please break it down, either way, whether you're setting it out at your curb or break it up to Elm Street, if you can break it down, it's great, we appreciate it. Takes a lot less for it.
Okay.
Thanks. Kevin?
Mr.?
Jeff?
Mr.?
Kurt?
Good.
Aaron?
Yeah.
Kerry? Anything from council?
Make a...
Kevin or Anne?
Anything?
Anything from public?
Oh, one last thing. Question on, there was discussion a couple meetings back, Jenny brought it up earlier, on, instead of three readings, two readings...
Oh, yeah.
For the next year.
We have to have an ordinance written, right?
Mm-hmm.
Is that, I mean, is that what you, do you guys want to?
I don't see the need for three.
Yeah.
Anytime you've ever had anything that could be somewhat contested or want to hear opposition of, tabled until another meeting to give the opportunity, so.
I know Scott loves it.
Yeah. Okay, we'll have the end, we'll direct the end, we'll work on that. Thanks for bringing that up.
Well, Jenny actually brought it to me, so.
We talked about it, we had just talked about it, started the meeting, so...
Oh, good.
That was...
Okay.
Gonna be on either next, next agenda, or it'll be on the first, uh, first meeting in January, either one.
Great.
Sure.
Nothing else? I make a motion to pay the claims.
Second.
Motion in second to pay the claims, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose the same sign.
And a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose the same sign.